I'd like to call the Policy Resolution Legislative Committee of the Wasis School Board to order. During this meeting, board members will, in many cases, be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will, in many cases, be extemporaneous and should not be considered, either their final opinion on a matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such. I seek a motion for the approval of the December 10, 2018 PRL minutes.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the Legislative Update. On December 6, 2017, the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding was established. The commission was charged with examining how tax dollars are distributed to schools and making recommendations to better meet the needs of students across the state. The sixteen-member bipartisan commission consisted of nine legislators and seven individuals who hold leadership positions in education. They held eight public hearings in 2018 and held two informational meetings. On January 4, 2019, the commission released its recommendations. So that's since our last meeting. Their recommendations address nineteen different areas of educational funding, and don't worry, I'm not going to read them to you, but they include per pupil categorical aid, special education reimbursement, reimbursement, sparsity aid, mental health services, gifted and talented programming, as well as others. The recommendations support increased funding for K-12 education through a variety of mechanisms ranging from the timing of school aid distribution to adjusting revenue limits to allow school districts to raise money through property taxes. One of the most encouraging parts of the report is the recommendation for the state to return to a commitment of two-thirds funding of K-12 education, which has not been in place since 2003. This would mitigate the levy impacts of the other recommendations. And you can go to, I provide a link in this report and it will be in the minutes, but all you have to do is Google "Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding" and you'll find their reports with all of their recommendations if you want to read them in detail.
That reimbursement piece is really important. When I first got on the board, we used to have to take out a loan at the beginning of the year, pay interest until we built up our other funds.
You mean the way that they distribute it?
Mm-hmm.
And I think they were going to distribute it in more different, more often, like...
But there would be a big gap where we wouldn't have the money and we'd have to take out a loan.
But it would be good for the districts that currently don't have a good fund balance to stop spending money on short-term loans, and it would be good for districts like us that have built up our fund balance that we would no longer need to have twenty-something million dollars sitting in there if we actually got our revenue on time to pay our bills. I mean, we'd have a big fund of money that we wouldn't need to keep maintaining all the time.
That'd be great.
So in general, I mean, I think the report is pretty encouraging as far as what they recommend for school funding, what we've known all along from dealing with budgets, you know, the last few years especially, but now everybody seems to agree that K-12 education needs additional funding, so that's fantastic. So next on our agenda, number four, school-level budget reporting, and I believe that's Bob.
Sure. I want to say a couple of things about this. You will find this report in your packet, and I also handed out a report that I'm going to talk about in a little while. It's very small print, but don't worry about it, you'll still get the idea. I wanted this on our agenda, to be able to talk about this before the media tells you about it or before perhaps you go to the State Education Convention and you hear about the Every Student Succeeds Act additional reporting requirements. We've been talking about this for about two years, and it starts because Every Student Succeeds Act is federal legislation. So the Federal Department of Education told the state agencies, the Department of Public Instruction in this case, "You need to track spending per school." We have student performance per school, we want spending per school, and left it up to the state agencies. Well, our state agency, DPI, had probably a stronger voice than most because a half-dozen or maybe eight or nine states were included to a little larger degree because various political reasons probably, but Bob Soldner from our DPI was pretty involved in that process, what the feds were going to ask state agencies to do. And then WASBO, the organization I belong to as a business manager, had a pretty big say in how the schools inside the state of Wisconsin were to report school-level spending. So if you think about it this way, we've broken down district-level spending for a long, long time. It hasn't gotten as much attention as you might think. That's what I gave you here. This is district-level spending, Fund X only per student. And the numbers are small, but it's also a graph. If you think about, the top one is the most high-spending district of the top 100 schools in Wisconsin. The bottom one is the lowest. The highlighted one is Wassa. So spending per student on a statewide basis, look where Wassa lands relative to the others, about $12,000 per student for Fund X only. So now, ESSA comes along and tells the states, and the state comes along and tells us, "We have to track this not only per school district, but per school inside the school district." We have performance per school. Now we need financial performance per school, so to speak. So I'm bringing this to your attention now because we've got 424 school districts in Wisconsin who are interpreting what the DPI told them in a lot of different ways. I think we're doing it right, but there are probably 423 school districts that also think they're doing it right, but some of it's left to interpretation. One thing that we did do, and the memo speaks a little bit to that, is we have changed our WOOFER, which is how we record all of our expenses and revenue for that matter, we changed our WOOFER code a little bit. It used to have fund followed by location. Location is where the money is spent. Object is what you're spending it on. Function is what you're using it for, a lot of times an academic area. Project is just to identify different federal projects, state projects. We want to track something that's referendum spending. That last budget center didn't exist. Think about the location. The location for the Education Department was the Education Department. It wasn't Lincoln School, it wasn't East High School, it wasn't West High School. So if the location was Education Department, we lost the ability to track what the Education Department was spending on Lincoln versus East versus West versus PD Jones. So the location, we changed that out so it's specifically a school. So location is school. Budget center is the Education Department. Budget center is the Business Department. So if I'm spending money in the Business Department that's purely on the Business Department, my location and budget center will be the same, 536 or 537. If I'm spending money in the Business Department on Lincoln Elementary School, my location will be Lincoln Elementary School, my budget center will be Business Department. So now you think about how this had a geometric progression influence on our code, because it just blew up, right? Right? You add three more digits at the end relative to all you had to begin with, it just blew up. So in the Business Department, we added 16,600 codes so far, and we're finding new codes all the time. This was to stay in compliance with ESSA and to identify costs per school. We want to drill it down to what this school is spending. Now, you're perhaps already starting to think of maybe a negative or a downfall or a gap in how this might be interpreted. What is our biggest expense in the general fund?
Teachers.
In particular, salary and benefits, but yes, teachers. And what's it going to look like if you have a veteran-laden staff versus a much younger staff? Real quickly, it can throw your cost per student really out of whack, and you might draw some conclusions that aren't accurate or are not speaking to how much money you're necessarily spending on that school. We maybe should be talking about staff per student instead of dollars per student. So if we fast-forward a couple of, this is just what the DPI put out, telling you to beware, this is happening. I put a red box around the one that's most urgent. Our budget for the year we're in the midst of, so we needed to track these things going back before July because that's when this budget started. The budget that we're in the midst of had to be reported to the DPI by location by December. We did that. So now the DPI's got the data and they're calling school districts back and asking, "What's wrong with this data? This one looks funny." Resubmit, resubmit, resubmit. Pretty soon, you're going to see that data publicly. I have access to our school district that put it in the report, it's the next page, but we're going to be able to see that data statewide. So I can just imagine what the media is going to do with it, what lawmakers are going to do, what maybe opponents, proponents, both, will do with that data. It's not going to be unusual to see school districts or schools that measure out at $4,000 or $5,000 per student, and there will be others that are $50,000 or $60,000 per student. In particular, some of the schools around the state that have very small student population. I think there was one in Stevens Point, there were three or four students and it was $60,000 per student or something like that. So you're going to see a huge disparity between cost per student if we drill it down to each individual school. I want to tell you this because you're going to see this in the media. Some people are going to make a bigger deal out of it than others. You might hear about it if you go to the conference down in Milwaukee. As a matter of fact, the DPI has one session planned to do kind of like what I'm doing right here, to give you a heads-up, this is coming, and warn you against maybe misuse of some of this data and take it on its surface level, don't drill into it too far, don't make huge decisions based on this just yet. But I think it'll get better in the next couple of years. I look forward to a time when we can really use this data to know if one of our schools is financially performing better than another one of our schools, or our schools are performing financially to other high schools perhaps in the state. Here's our data. Again, that one's pretty small, too, but if you look at the first three, the boxed-out ones are really the ones that are important. If you look at the first three, wave, $6,000 per student. Doesn't come as a surprise. We don't separate a lot of the costs up by wave, wave just as, doesn't have a building, doesn't have a lot of buildings and grounds, there's not utility bills that go to wave. Only $2, Lincoln Elementary, $16,000 per student. Perhaps we had a year where there were a lot of capital expenditures, those do go in the general fund, capital expenditures, roof, boilers, things like that, also veteran staff. If we really wanted to look more closely, maybe we have a more veteran staff at Lincoln or along with some of the other high-cost schools. But we're going to have to make sure, we're cautious about how we use this data. In the next probably year or two, this is just budgeted data, then in the summer you see actual data, actually next fall, actuals, it will be put right on the report card for the school. There will be academic data and financial data on the same report.
Do you account, is there a way to account for debt service?
Debt service, if you look real closely, and again, this is small, my apologies, there are exclusions on the bottom, and the DPI insists, exclude this, 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 this. Capital projects are excluded, co-op, CSA, debt service, equipment facilities, food service, independent charter tuition, inter-fund transfers, open enrollment in and out, there are some exclusions.
So an older school that we're putting capital improvements into is going to look higher than a newer school that we're actually paying more money on, maybe, perhaps?
No.
And debts, I mean, if we put $20 million into a new school, it now looks like it's an inexpensive school, and our 100-year-old school that we're putting upkeep into looks more expensive?
It even gets worse than that because districts are left with a lot of choices for what they want to exclude. So now districts could exclude a lot of things that we're not excluding by choice.
So then you're not comparing apples to apples.
So until this really gets defined more clearly by the DPI and all the other state agencies, if you think about it, right now, we feel pretty comfortable comparing one school in our district to another because we're using the same exclusions. Gets more difficult when you start comparing our schools to others in Wisconsin. The federal lawmakers are after comparing our schools in Wisconsin to schools outside of Wisconsin. So you can see the challenge from exactly what you're talking about.
Well, and you would be maybe in a position to be able to compare schools within our district, but I think it would be difficult for us or for the public to because you'd be able to look and see, "Oh, well, we just did do that roof last year and that's why that one is way up. And by the way, this other school needs that new roof next year." So now next year, this one's going to go up even though we haven't actually changed anything, whereas, I mean, I wouldn't know that unless I spent hours poring through it.
We would be after excluding all of them. I'd be in favor of excluding all those costs so we can talk about pure operational costs. Now, of course, you just updated the HVAC and maybe it costs you a little bit more because it's not as efficient of a building, they'll show up in the electric bill or the heat bill, but at least then the improvement itself is out.
Right.
So you could take some of the things like the roof replacements and the HVAC replacements and some of the big capital plans, take them out, but you're still left with the operational costs. A new furnace is more efficient than an old one, so to speak. Usually, your staffing expenses are going to overwhelm that anyway, but I think we could find a way to compare school to school to school, but once you're using dollars, you're still stuck with, aren't we more accurate to talk about staffing levels, school to school to school?
Sure. Now, does ESAA allow you to, to an effect, do that by reaveraging the salary and benefit costs? You say, "We got a Wassa district average, this is the number of FTEs, this is the number of costs, this is the cost we apply to that school."
No.
You can't do it?
No.
Next year's update.
Yeah, it's going to go through an evolution and it'll get better, and I think that's going to be the DPI's message when they present next week down in Milwaukee. We're working through this. If anybody wants to make high-stakes decisions based on this data, that's probably not the right thing to do. Let's wait till it gets better, we'll get used to what the reports look like, we'll tune in on something meaningful over the next couple of years.
My concern is that this is really ripe for misuse.
That's why I want to say it in public, and I'll say it as often as I can, it's a work in progress.
That's good to know. Anybody else have anything? Okay, number five, WASB Delegate Assembly Resolutions. I'm sure you all saw that attachment of all the different resolutions that will be coming up, and I just wanted to give everybody an opportunity to comment on any of those.
How do you want to do this? Do you want to go through each one or just ask us if anybody wants to comment on anything?
I think we'll just see if anybody wants to comment on anything. I think it would take us a long time to go through all of them, and maybe some of them we're not concerned about, we read them and they seem fine.
There's some really good stuff in here, but one that I would take exception to is 1919, and that's the, oh, about three-quarters of the way down on page 12. And WASBO is under the impression that the HLC, the Higher Learning Commission, has increased requirements for individuals teaching university-level classes, and that's actually not at all true, it's the opposite. HLC has actually reduced the requirements. It used to be that if you're going to teach at the baccalaureate level, you had to possess a master's degree, now it's only 18 credit hours in the disciplines. So those aren't, for instance, if you take the Masters of Teaching History down in Stevens Point, you are getting 18 credit hours, but you're not getting a full history master's degree. You have a lot of pedagogy courses mixed in. With the change they've already adopted, we can accept those at the university now, that degree as enough to be able to teach at the university, whereas previously you couldn't accept that. So actually, the HLC requirements have been reduced, and speaking as a recently former department chair, I was chair of the University of Wisconsin College's History Department, 13 campuses across the state, and so involved in vetting teachers and other individuals to teach university courses, and it's a serious procedure and you certainly don't want somebody who's not qualified to teach at university. Of course, the students are going to get university credit for, so I want to recommend reducing it below the 18, and I even have others about dropping it all the way down to 18 credits because you're not as fully qualified as your peers, yours earlier had been. And so though we might want to increase the number of university courses offered, I don't think lowering requirements for the instructional staff is a good way to get there.
Yeah, I was asked to write up a synopsis of each one of these, and that was the one that I recommend that we tell Lee that he needs to vote no on, and if you feel comfortable about doing it, you could write up what you just said and give it to Lee, and he can approach one of the microphones and give his reasons or give our reasons as to why we are against it. And that was really the only one that I would recommend that we vote against. The other one was a spelling error for the Indigenous Peoples, and my guess is Tricia has contacted WASB and I'm guessing that they will fix it beforehand. Otherwise, I'm the one that's going to read the resolution on the floor before it gets discussed and voted on, and I will ask her to...
So that one, I didn't see a specific date. They wanted to be an observance day, but was, is there a specific date attached to that or not yet? Do you know?
It's typically the second Monday in October, for those that recognize it.
That's what I was thinking.
And for purposes of transparency, I did reach out to the chairman, Mr. Hyde, and pointed out that Peoples should be P-E-O-P-L-E-S apostrophe to indicate the number of Indigenous Peoples, it's not just a single body. And then he had instructed me to let our delegate know, "If it wasn't me, it's not me," so I let Lee know, but then I also let Jane know as a courtesy in the event that she has to speak up instead.
Okay. Well, I would just make a comment about the Common School Fund Library Aid 1. I'm fully in support of that, and there are always attacks on the Common School Fund because it's such a large pool of money of which we only spend the interest, but I really believe that because of the way our state constitution is written, that that has really saved our schools in lean times, and part of that provision is not only do public school libraries get that money, everything gets barcoded and it's shared by everyone and listed in a public catalog. So not only does Library Aid provide equitable access to learning materials for all staff and students in public schools, Library Aid monies are the sole source of state funding for many public school libraries. Many school districts, this is the only money for making library-related purchases.
And when I started writing these up, I reached out to the department heads that would be affected by this, and I evidently was not clear. I never expected anybody to do any research. I just wanted to give you an opportunity, if you felt strongly about something, chime in, so...
Sure, I read through all of these, thank you for the opportunity, and they're all very good. I don't think there's anything really we can't get behind, number ones you highlighted me. Raising state aid, we always talk about raising the state aid, doesn't really help us unless the revenue comes along with it. So one of them was raising state aid for students in poverty, and state aid just is tax relief unless revenue comes along with it. Another one was special ed reimbursement. We're going to talk about this one a lot in the next month or so. It's, right now, it's 24.5 percent, and the amount, the pure amount has stayed the same since about 2008, and we're hopeful that it's going to go up. Right now, in our assumptions that I made today, and we're going to show them to you in two weeks, we're going to keep it at 24.5 and just hope for the best in the next budget. Governors suggested as much as 30 percent. Those are real dollars, going from 24.5 to 30, just peaking here, that's about 3.3 million up to 4 billion, that's $700,000. It's real money.
It's real money, but we're still, you know, look how beaten down we are, and we're rejoicing at the possibility of having 30 percent of our forced costs be reimbursed. So the mandated costs that we have to do, the government says we have to do it, we're going to rejoice if they cover 30 percent of it.
Yes, please.
Is that sarcasm?
But I will rejoice if it happens.
I'm lobbying for more, it helps to know that.
I do have to point out, too, that when I look at these resolutions and then I also look at the Blue Ribbon Commission on School Funding, one thing really that was starkly missing from the Blue Ribbon Commission on Funding was any talk about the impact of private school vouchers on school funding, and I see that the WASB does have a resolution about that, so I was very happy about that. And they oppose the use of state or federal taxpayer dollars to subsidize non-public schools or non-public students/parents through a system of vouchers.
And there's an individual one about the special education vouchers.
Right.
Yes. And they also support requiring tech, property tax bills to include information from the school district that shows the dollar amount, how much goes out in vouchers, and now for us, it's over a million dollars. That's also real money that we are losing, so...
And just as a point of reference, I'm representing CSA 9 at the Resolution Committee meeting, so actually, there'll be three board members from the Wasis School District there.
Okay.
We don't have a formal vote on these, but do you all want me to send that recommendation on to Lee?
Yeah.
Against 1919?
I agree with that.
Yeah?
I think that's a good idea.
And he goes in there with full knowledge.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, so then, next, item number six, Policy 6227, music selection. So the visions.
Good evening. You should have a copy of Policy 6227 in front of you. Recently, the District Music Committee was called together to meet in regards to an issue brought forward by a parent, and as we met and looked and worked through the policy, we found that there were some potential issues. For example, on the second page, implementation number three, it states that if an issue arises, the building principal, the fine arts coordinator, the equity director, which we don't have anymore, and the music teacher will meet to resolve any concerns, and if necessary, the principal will consult with other district administrators before making a final decision. So basically, what it's saying is that the principal was left having to make that final decision, and as we talked to several of the principals, they weren't really in favor of that necessarily, and they said if we have a music committee that's meeting, it would be much better for them to weigh in on that. The music committee themselves felt that if there was going to be an issue brought forward, they would like to be able to speak to it and to discuss it. So we made a few suggested changes here, ran it by the music committee, and they have all said they are in agreement. So instead of number three, we've now got that issues or concerns regarding musical selections and delivery should be directed to the teacher or the school principal. Originally, the policy took that away from the teacher completely, and we still think it's best if there's an issue, if you can go and sit down with the teacher and discuss it first. If a parent or a community member is like possibly afraid or nervous about doing that, then that's when we would suggest going to the principal. If the issue should be directed to the principal, then we ask that the principal sits down and works with the teacher, the parent, community member to try and resolve the issue. But if it can't be, then the principal moves it forward to the fine arts coordinator to involve the entire district music team in issuing a final opinion. And there was one other slight change, and that was on the last page, page three. We then struck number six because, again, it, here it says that the school principal should act in a neutral role as a liaison, but earlier it said the principal should decide what the answer was, so we figured we could get rid of that portion. And then down at the bottom, originally, it said that the district music team would be established to meet on a regular basis to be a sounding board, and we felt it would be more appropriate to have them meet as necessary to serve as the sounding board and also to determine final opinions on issues and concerns regarding musical selection and delivery. It was really a great meeting with the entire committee, and some very thoughtful, thoughtful ideas were provided, including some amazing research that was done by some of the people on the committee to say, "Here's what we found when we really dug in and looked deeply at these selections." So it was, this is more of a cleanup and also then directing to say, rather than the principal making the decision, it will be brought to the music committee.
That makes sense. Can I ask who the board member was? Can I ask who the board member was on the committee?
I don't believe that there was one that day.
Okay, because I'm just bringing it up because we wrote a new policy, and one of the things on the policy was that the board president would assign somebody for the music committee. And if we aren't going to do that, then we need to redo that again.
Yeah. Well, but this, which, well, we can look up that policy later and get that taken care of. But had that, had that committee been meeting on a regular basis in that case?
No, it has not. And the reason is, the teachers meet together occasionally to talk about what they're planning for the next concert, those type of things. But as a committee, as a sounding board, that really hasn't been seen as a necessary item. It's when there is a concern that the whole group will get together.
And we kind of addressed that in the policy about the appointments that the president made. And there it said that music would be applied, I mean, someone would be appointed when it was necessary. So we have conflicting policy there. Let's clean it up.
I have a language concern. I'd just like to see it be a little more inclusive of our households where there aren't parents. If there's a way to include guardian, because reference to community doesn't include guardian if there's a way to include parent slash guardian when you refer to the parent.
That's a good catch.
And Tom, is this in line with what we promised the community when we had the music issue?
It is. And it's that it comes back to a broader group to look at everything as a whole. You know, that this particular issue came before the music committee because there was a concern over a specific song in a concert. And when the music committee took a look at the entire concert, all the pieces, and took a look at the history and some of the educational background that was provided not only to the students, but also to the people that night in the concert, it was felt that in an overall picture, it was appropriate. And I think that's what we wanted to do. We didn't want to just make knee-jerk reactions to something that was said here or there.
No, I didn't really mean that. I was thinking back a little bit about when they wanted community input continuously involved in the programming. And I wondered if this still meets that criteria, because they were pretty adamant that they wanted to be part of the music selections. I mean, they wanted to be part of the music program, and they wanted, they wanted input. Am I remembering that right, Pat?
Your memory's better than mine.
Oh, well, good. Well, I just.
No, I do recall it too, that that was one of the concerns, is that they were completely taken out of the process, and they wanted to have some involvement to assure a balance from the parent or guardian perspective. Right. And I think, I think that's where the parent bringing it forward, either to A, the teacher, or B, the principal, to say, there's a concern. And then if it can't be worked up, bringing the entire music committee together, to me, that would be providing that opportunity. Or are you suggesting we involve actually several community members as part of the music committee?
Well, see, that's the part that I think cost us a lot of mistrust in the community, that we were not being sensitive. And we were just, I'm thinking of some of the people from the synagogues thought that they were routinely left out of it. And when they would voice concerns about their child didn't feel comfortable, and were just simply told, well, go off the stage then during that number. I don't want to go back to that. I don't want people to think that they don't have input prior to. I'm just questioning that because that was pretty traumatic around here. And I just want to make sure that people feel that, you know, that they're being included. And that's my concern.
But the original policy doesn't say that. And so we're cleaning up the original policy.
But they met, the committee met, we were supposed to meet periodically. Wasn't that how it was originally designed?
It was. It was to meet periodically. And again, as, when you read through this, that the coordinator, fine arts coordinator, is regularly conferring with the music teachers. And I know that's happening. And she is asking them to submit copies of the repertoire for each concert to her so that she can review them and make sure that it looks to be balanced and that there's nothing glaring that stands out. I know that a lot of the pieces go home to the parents. Of course, my child's going to come home and tell me what we're singing or what we're playing. And I think that's what happened here, is the parent, when the child said, here's what we're doing, the parent took the time to come in and say, I have a concern. And I think that's hopefully the way we would want it to work, is to have that. And that's why we said they could either go to the teacher, they could go to the principal, whichever they would feel more comfortable.
And you put some routines in place so that one person in one building isn't working in isolation. They're always a part of this bigger group where there's some checks and balances.
And the music teachers regularly share their concert with all the other music teachers just as a, can you please put your eyes on this to see if there's anything I've missed?
And I understand that. I'm just going back to, what commitment did we make to the community about having a periodical, a periodic meeting with the committee members to feel that they felt confident in what we were doing? And this is, this is just going to be on a need basis. And my question to you is, do you think the community's okay with that?
Could you have a annual meeting at the beginning of the school year to state the purpose of the music committee and kind of lay it out, and then meet as needed? Would that?
I don't know. I mean, the music, this music committee, as it's discussed here, is, it essentially comes together when a problem has been identified. So we've got the professionals operating together all along the way until there's a problem, and then they come together to adjudicate the issue. And that seems to me to be fine and appropriate, because we do have people, the music coordinator and the building principal and the teacher involved. And as we've just found out here, additional teachers involved across the district vetting these pieces along the way. So I think there's a pretty strong process.
And I think you're talking about being proactive instead of reactive. And maybe at the beginning, when the kids are starting to learn their songs for the concert, maybe in the newsletter, the music teacher could put a little word, first and second grade are working on these songs for the Christmas concert.
Winter.
Or, yeah, winter concert or spring concert or whatever it is. And then if there wasn't an objection, it could be early on and we would avoid the mess.
I think it'd be hard to run it on a regular basis as opposed to when an issue arises, because the songs change every single concert for every single school, every single year. It's not like, it's not like you're adopting a program and now this is what we're going to run for the next five years. Then I would say, you know, in front of it, you have a committee, you get together, pick our songs for the next five years. I mean, it's six new songs at every single, or five new songs, or more than that, 15 new songs at some schools every single year, so.
And the district-wide music team couldn't adjudicate the issue if they had been involved already in approving the repertoire.
Right.
So they can't play both roles.
If you don't mind my adding, when we sat in that, in that committee to have a discussion about what was selected, for, I don't know, you might already be aware, but the depth of, of, one, knowledge of our music teachers and their deep interest in meeting the expectations of the, of the community in terms of variety, the skills developed by the students, it was really impressive. And I find myself wondering, why would we, other than the fact that the music, the concerts are so public, why would we ask for community input to the musical selections when we've got experts doing it? You know, it's kind of like, would we call somebody in to decide what football offenses we're going to run that year? We wouldn't. So I guess I.
I think they hear from the community on that, though.
They do. Plenty. Plenty. You know, we've got, what, 34 concerts a year? I think it would be difficult. I hear what you're saying, Trace. I'm not sure how we.
No, I'm just trying to reflect back on when we had this controversy. And what we committed to the community at the time.
Right.
And I just want to make sure what we're doing matches what we said to the community we would do.
Yeah.
And I think overall it does.
Well, then I'm fine with it.
Anything else?
No, if there is a concern that's raised and is taken care of at the building level, is there still a report that'll end up going up to the music coordinator or higher levels of administration? Will they be informed?
You know, the principal, right now, the principal is hampered the way this policy reads now, because the principal is supposed to remain a, kind of an objective person with neutrality here. Whereas what we're saying here is, if it can be solved at the building level, that would be the best place for it to happen. If it can't be, then we would convene the entire music committee.
Right. But even if it is resolved, will it be reported up that we had this issue, here's how we resolved it, so that there's a record?
A letter goes back to the parent, a letter goes back to the principal, you know, so that there is a record of it, yes.
And I think the important thing is that we do it before the concert and not after, when there are hurt feelings and.
And in this case, in this case, the parent said, I don't want to stop things where they are now. And I also want my child to participate in everything. It's just, I have a concern that I would like looked at for the future. And so that's what we did, is we sat down and talked about it. In this case, was there an issue and can we do anything different? You know, as Dr. Hilt said, one of the things that kept coming back around, this group of professionals is extremely committed to making sure this policy is followed. And to making sure that they provide balanced musical programs.
Anything else? And I would make a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of Policy 6227, music selection, as proposed.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is school calendars. And Amy, you want to address that?
Yes, thank you. Last week, the school calendar committee met for the second time, and they have advanced two calendars for your consideration and approval. The calendars do differ slightly from last year. You will note that in the proposed 1920 calendar, you will see a green shaded area over Monday, November 4th. This will be the first opportunity that we will be offering an afternoon session for parent-teacher conferences. So this afternoon session will be in addition to the two evening opportunities that are currently provided. The other change from previous year's calendars will be the splitting of the professional learning days in January. Here you will see one day in January, which is the 20th. The split for February would occur on the 21st. The committee was quite intentional about where they placed that second day. And this also will mark still Martin Luther King Day as being off for January 20th. We retain our inclement weather makeup day, should it be needed. And this calendar does align with the Merrill School District as far as spring breaks. And it also is aligned with the proposed D.C. Ever School District calendar for both winter break and spring break.
And you, WSP? That's just for me.
So Amy, on the half-day for parent-teacher conference, is that district-wide?
That'll be a half-day where, yes, district-wide in the afternoon.
Okay.
So what this means is the secondary students would be coming in in the morning only. There would be no school for elementary, no AM or PM, early childhood or 4K classes. The elementary record-keeping would be held that morning in order to accommodate parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon. And then we'll, we'll just check to see what the data shows at the schools to see if this is something that the parents like. Okay. Any questions on, additional questions on 1920 calendar? Okay. And for 2021, mind's loading. This calendar, we do start prior to Labor Day, and we cannot start school any earlier than September 1st. So we are taking that September 1st date. The committee thought for this particular calendar, they would like to do the, that half-day of the Common Parent-Teacher Conference afternoon, just prior to the end of first quarter. So that date would fall on October 28th, which is a Wednesday. And they like the idea of offering different days. Typically, days off are Mondays and Fridays, and this would just be an opportunity for a Wednesday and to gauge attendance and participation in parent-teacher conferences. Again, this calendar reflects the split of two professional learning days in January, following the same schedule as the 1920, by having Martin Luther King Day, Junior Day off, and the second day, that third Friday in February. The only difference with this calendar compared to the 1920 is looking at March of 2021, the quarter actually ends on, the suggested quarter would end on Friday the 19th for third quarter. There would be one week of instruction for fourth quarter, and then spring break would occur. And the committee talked about that. They looked at a couple different versions for this year's calendar. Some calendars are just a little odd, and this happens to be one of them. The differential between third quarter and fourth quarter was a difference of seven days. The teachers thought that was too big of a gap. So they said, we know this is just kind of an odd year. For this year only, let's try to have the third quarter end on the 19th and try that one week gap, and then move into spring break. And why is because April 2nd is Good Friday. We did look at a calendar that had spring break starting March 22nd, but then we have to account for another day for April 2nd, and it just did not work out with numbers. So all levels, in fact, the entire committee agreed to try this particular scenario for 2021. We also looked at election days, and we just simply don't have days to be off for elections, because that would be for sure one day per year, up to a maximum of three days per calendar year, per school year. I have been in conversations with the city clerk, and as I indicated last month, the numbers of foot traffic coming in is lower than previous years due to absentee voting increase as well as early voting. But they are looking at having a stronger police presence. We already have police or emergency police, but the city will be talking with the police department for additional coverage. Any questions on this calendar?
Thank you for discussing election day.
No, you're welcome. It was a fabulous committee, it really was. We looked at so many different ideas, and they wanted to come back. They really challenged each other's thinking, and everyone came away with a greater understanding. And that was, that's really the full motive.
Thank you for that explanation too, of that date in March, because that's one that jumped out at me that I think I would get questions about, because I know parents do like having their elementary kids off on the Friday PM before spring break. And so it's helpful for me to be able to explain why that wasn't able to work out.
Just for.
Now, we'll see if I still remember that, you know, a year from now when that question actually gets asked. But I took a note, so we'll see.
Okay, just call me, Lance.
Okay.
I just think these look like they were, they were really well thought out. So thank you to you and the committee for the work on this.
Thank you. I'll pass that one to them. They'll appreciate it.
Okay, then I would seek a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the 2019-20, 2020, and the 2020-21 school calendars.
So moved. Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And lastly, I would seek a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Okay.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? To adjourn.